Also here tonight with us is Julianne Ulmer, who will be working at Edgar and the high school as a social worker leave replacement. Ms. Granados is on leave, and we're so fortunate to have Julianne join us. Knows the school well, because Dad Bob has been a longtime teacher and coach here in the district. And it's just such a pleasure to meet Julianne and learn about her background and her special talents that she's going to bring here as a social worker. So Julianne, invite you to the microphone and say a few words.
Wonderful, welcome.
Hi, everyone. Hi. Thank you for having me and for this opportunity. My name is Julianne Ulmer, and as Dr. Caputo said, my dad has been here for a long time, so I know the Metatchen community very well. I went to James Madison University, and my first internship, I worked with first-time mothers and children and their families in the Shenandoah Valley, so that was a really fun experience. And I just graduated from Rutgers this past May with my master's in social work, and I worked with high school students in an alternative education program. So that was a great experience also, and I'm from Middlesex, New Jersey, so I'm kind of local. And yeah, I look forward to being a part of this community and working with my students, their families, staff, and administration. So thank you so much for this opportunity, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, we're happy to have you. Welcome. So we continue that, Dr. Johnson Marcus, thank you for allowing us to bring our newly hired folks to the subsequent meeting when they're available to come. Both had long days today, and we appreciate them being here with us for the meeting tonight, and I think it's important for the community. If you don't have a student getting music or a student working with the child study team, you might not get a chance to know some of our new folks. So they're great, and we're so proud that they're here with us.
Absolutely, that's part of what makes this community so fantastic. We get to know the folks in our community who will be helping our children or indeed just members of our community, so welcome to vote, thank you.
Certainly, it certainly doesn't look like we have a very long meeting, but if you want to take just a five-second pause.
To allow them to go home after their very long day, absolutely, we will not be insulted if you don't stay for a meeting. So thank you so much, and if you'd like to go, have a great night.
Thank you.
Good call. All right. And at this time, we are open to the public, anywho, and seeing... Is that Dr. Glandy's up there?
Yeah, I can't tell.
Seeing no additional members of the public, I believe we can close that section. Dr. Caputo, do you have any presentations for us?
No presentations tonight.
Fantabulous, moving along. I don't have a report tonight, do you have anything you'd like to report?
No report tonight, I'll talk next meeting after the 28th to remind folks that Election Day will be the following week. But in the meantime, if you received your ballot, I'll remind everyone again, but it's election season and it's critical in a democracy that you exercise your right to vote. So we encourage folks to do that.
All right, thank you, Dr. Caputo. Alrighty, we are up to committee reports. Mr. Glassberg, I believe Construction is the only committee that has met since our last meeting.
Got it. Okay, so Construction met on October 6th, that meeting was started with Open to the Public in our media center. Just some updates, most of the interior HVAC at the high school, most of the interior HVAC is installed. The cafeteria addition is complete, although still may not be used at the moment just because of the configuration, what's going on there. Most of the framing, rough electrical are in the new gym addition area. The translucent glass is going to be added around the end of October. The addition is expected to be complete around the third week of December, and after that, there will be some commissioning of systems. There's a little bit more work to do in the new cafeteria addition, because when the board office moves out, then they'll clean that up and put it into order as a cafeteria. But it won't take too long, that'll take us into the middle part of January or later January. The new electrical service for the high school is expected to go in during Jersey Week, Election Week, weather-dependent. And then that will allow the air conditioning systems to be working shortly later after that. There's additional soils that were removed from, or should have been removed previously, so as of my report, it said should be removed this week, but that week has passed, so should be removed at this point. But the progress is going really well at the high school there. We hope to be able to get in a couple of games in January or some type of events in January to make use of that space, and I think it will be a really great community event time. So I'm hoping when we are able to announce something happening in that new gym, that the whole community will come out and pack the new gym. At Moss, the air and unit ventilators are working, full-day kindergarten is up and running. Later January is when the entire new structure should be completed, in plenty of time for grade realignment for next year. At Edgar, the air and unit ventilators are working. As of the meeting, it was not fully working in a handful of rooms due to some motors that needed to be replaced. And there's still some balancing that's taking place, that's in the works, so there might be some rooms that are abnormally cold or not while that balancing is being worked on, and we appreciate your patience as always. The landscaping should be completed very soon, and then after that, there's two basketball hoops that are being installed out front. So that will be great for kids to be able to use when everything is ready. And they're going through a completion list in the building for the new part of that addition that was put in, there are some items that needed to, that still need to be fixed. At Campbell, the air and unit ventilators are working, the shades in the cafeteria addition were installed, but were not working as of our last meeting. I'm not sure if you know anything
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. So, I'll just say a quick little thing. First off, thank you again for this opportunity. Everyone has been very kind and supportive, so that's been helpful. I'm Chioma. I'm from New Jersey. I went to school at Montclair State. Let's probably put this up a little, a little tall. I went to school at Montclair State, studied classical piano, and got the chance to study abroad. So, I went to Germany for two years, and then studied in Pakistan for three years, which I absolutely loved. And so, I'm, you know, now back in the States and here, you know, willing to contribute to the, the music program here with the experience that I've learned, and I'm very grateful to be here, so thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Welcome.
Chioma's smart and talented, and she comes to us at the perfect time. It's a hard position to fill, so we're excited. Thank you, Chioma.
Glad to have you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, yeah. Also here tonight with us is Julianne Ulmer, who will be working at Edgar and the high school as a social worker leave replacement. Ms. Granados is on leave, and we're so fortunate to have Julianne join us. Knows the school well, because Dad Bob has been a longtime teacher and coach here in the district, and it's just such a pleasure to meet Julianne and, and learn about her background and, and her special talents that she's gonna bring here as a social worker. So, Julianne, I invite you to the microphone and say a few words.
Wonderful, welcome.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Thank you for having me and for this opportunity. My name is Julianne Ulmer, and as Dr. Caputo said, my dad has been here for a long time, so I know the Matatchan community very well. I went to James Madison University, and my first internship, I worked with first-time mothers and children and their families in the Shenandoah Valley, so that was a really fun experience. And I just graduated from Rutgers this past May with my master's in social work, and I worked with high school students in an alternative education program, so that was a great experience also. And I'm from Middlesex, New Jersey, so I'm kinda local. And yeah, I look forward to being a part of this community and working with my students, their families, staff, and administration. So, thank you so much for this opportunity, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Julianne.
Thank you. We're happy to have you. Welcome.
So, we continue that. Dr. Johnson Marcus, thank you for allowing us to bring our newly hired folks to the, you know, subsequent meeting when they're available to come. Both had long days today, and we appreciate them being here with us for the meeting tonight, and I think it's important for the community. If you don't have a student getting music or a student working with the child study team, you might not get a chance to, you know, to know some of our new folks. So, they're great, and we're so proud that they're here with us.
Absolutely. That's part of what makes this community so fantastic. We get to know the folks in our community who will be helping our children, or indeed just members of our community. So, welcome to you both. Thank you.
Certainly. It certainly doesn't look like we have a very long meeting, but if you wanna take just a five-second pause, Julianne and Chioma.
To allow them to go home after their very long day. Absolutely. We will not be insulted if you don't stay for a meeting. So, thank you so much, and if you'd like to go, have a great night.
Thank you.
Good call.
All right. And at this time, we are open to the public. Anywho, and seeing... Is that Dr. Glandsees up there?
Yeah, I can't tell.
Seeing no additional members of the public, I believe we can close that section. Dr. Caputo, do you have any presentations for us?
No presentations tonight.
Fantabulous. Moving along. I don't have a report tonight. Do you have anything you'd like to report?
No report tonight. I'll talk next meeting after the twenty-eighth to remind folks that Election Day will be the following week. But in the meantime, if you received your ballot, I'll remind everyone again, but it's election season, and it's critical in a democracy that, that you exercise your, your right to vote. So, we encourage folks to do that.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Caputo. All righty, we are up to committee reports. Mr. Glassberg, I believe construction is the only committee that has met since our last meeting.
Got it. Okay, so, construction met on October sixth. That meeting was started with open to the public in our media center. Just some updates. Most of the interior HVAC at the high school, most of the interior HVAC is installed. The cafeteria addition is complete, although still may not be used at the moment just because of the configuration, what's going on there. Most of the framing, rough electrical are in, in the new gym addition area. The translucent glass is gonna be added around the end of October. The addition is expected to be complete around the third week of December, and after that, there will be some commissioning of systems. There's a little bit more work to do in the new cafeteria addition, because when the board office moves out, then they'll clean that up and put it into order as a, as a cafeteria. But it won't take too long. That'll take us into the middle part of January or later January. The new electrical service for the high school is expected to go in during Jersey Week, Election Week, weather-dependent. And then that will allow the air conditioning systems to be working shortly later after that. There's additional soils that were removed from, or should have been removed previously, so as of my report, it said should be removed this week, but that week has passed, so should be removed at this point. But the progress is going really well at the high school there. We hope to be able to get in a couple games in January or some type of events in January to make use of that space, and I think it will be a really great community event time, so I'm hoping when we are able to announce something happening in that new gym, that the whole community will come out and pack the new gym. At Moss, the air and unit ventilators are working. Full-day kindergarten is up and running. Later January is when the entire new structure should be completed, in plenty of time for grade realignment for next year. At Edgar, the air and unit ventilators are working. As of the meeting, it was not fully working in a handful of rooms due to some motors that needed to be replaced, and there's still some balancing that's taking place that's in the works. So, there might be some rooms that are abnormally cold or not while that balancing is being worked on, and we appreciate your patience as always. The landscaping should be completed very soon, and then after that, there's two basketball, two basketball hoops that are being installed out front, so that will be great for kids to be able to use when everything is, is ready. And they're going through a completion list in the building for the new part of that addition that was put in. There are some items that needed to, that still need to be fixed. At Campbell, the air and unit ventilators are working. The shades in the cafeteria addition were installed, but were not working as of our last meeting. I'm not sure if you know anything new on, on the shades in the cafeteria.
The report today confirmed that the shades are working.
Okay, great. All right, so hopefully the shades are now working in the cafeteria space. Regarding the, anything from the public at that point, there was a question from public via email regarding the garage doors that are used at Campbell School, so we're looking into that in the cafeteria area, and then also regarding landscaping that's gonna be happening near, on the edges of the Moss School. So, those, those are both things that are on our agenda to look at. In the closed session, we discussed budget concerns. The contingency budgets are, that we have for the plan are essentially used up at this point, so hopefully things will go smoothly moving forward. We discussed security at Moss School as it relates to just the construction area and making sure that we're keeping everybody safe in and around the building. We discussed celebrations. There will be some type of, of public event at each of these schools so that the public is able to come into the new spaces, see what it is that they voted for, see the completed work, so we continue to look at that. And then we also spent a little time as well talking about the ESIP energy-saving program and evaluating our choices for different ways to potentially save money on our energy uses. That is the end of that report. Our next meeting is on November seventeenth, and our next meeting that's open to the public is on December fifteenth. I'll repeat that as we get closer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glassberg. I appreciate that. I don't believe there are any other committee reports at this time. So, now we turn to our student board member, Ms. Michaels Lamort.
Hello. I just have one thing. On the twenty-first, at Campbell, there's going to be a, I believe, a PTO-sponsored book swap, so look forward to that.
All right, thank you. All right, at this time, is there any old business from the board? Mr. Suss?
No, no, well, I have old business, which is happy birthday, Mr. Lifton.
Oh. That is certainly old business.
I did have a question for him.
Happy birthday.
I did have two questions for Mr. Glassberg. I, I normally am on a construction committee, but I was unable to make it. How many people from the public attended?
There was, at that meeting, there was nobody additional from the public.
Okay.
The correspondences were via, they were, one was via email, and one was in person before, before the meeting.
And the other question is, do you know when the construction will start on fixing the rest of Campbell Field? Do we have a date for that?
Yes, let me think. We had, that, that was a topic at the construction meeting today at ten o'clock. I think next week.
Okay, great.
Dr. Stansett asked about that and needs to have plans. It's not finalized today. I think it's next week.
Excellent.
So, I'll piggyback off of that and then just repeat, or come back to one thing that I didn't mention. So, what Mr. Suss mentioned was not part of the referendum, but it is something that we agreed to do after the fact, because we found that it would be worthwhile to level out the back field, the field at Campbell, not closest to the school. So, as part of the referendum, we were dealing with drainage issues in and around the school, which was something that we heard a lot of at our public meetings leading up to the referendum. After the fact, we were hearing more amongst our board members and also amongst the public about drainage issues further out at the ball field, and that's something that we're gonna be doing, although it's not specifically part of the referendum. And one thing that I neglected to mention is that at Moss, there's an interior courtyard playground area, and that construction has begun finally. So, that was a little bit delayed, but they have gotten working on that, so hopefully kids will be able to enjoy that additional space pretty soon.
All right. Thank you for the questions and the further updates. Any other questions on the committee report? All right, wonderful. Or, wait, we were in business. Sorry.
That was old business.
That was old business.
Now you go to new business.
All right.
That's not Mr. Lifton's birthday.
I'm back now. I'm, listen, I did not call you back, okay?
I.
Let the record reflect. Any new business from the board? See, I would've said it here. Happy birthday. All right, at this time, I'd like, seeing none. No new business? All right. This time, I'd like to move to approve the September thirtieth minutes of the Matatchan Board of Education Special Business Meetings, one and two, and the board meeting. Is there a second? Mr. Bott, any comments or questions on those minutes? Seeing none. Roll call, please. Mr. Bott.
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham.
abstain.
Thank you. Mr. Glassberg.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus.
Yes.
Mr. Lifton.
Yes.
Dr. Spigner.
Yes.
Mr. Suss.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. At this time, the meeting is open to the public. However, not seeing any change in the room since the last time I said that. Not seeing anyone looking like they wanna say anything. We will close that section of the meeting. At this time, I turn to the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. Oftentimes, it may appear to members of our audience that the Board of Education takes action with very little comment, and in many cases, a unanimous vote. Before a matter is placed on the agenda at a public meeting, the administration has thoroughly reviewed the matter with the superintendent of schools. If the superintendent is satisfied that the matter is ready to be presented to the Board of Education, it is then referred to the appropriate board committee. The members of the board committee work with the administration and the superintendent to assure that the members fully understand the matter. When the committee is satisfied with the matter, it is presented to the Board of Education for discussion before any final action is taken. Only then is it placed on the agenda for action at a public meeting. I'd like to move the personnel items A-one through A-twelve. Could I have a second, please? Mr. Suss. And any questions or comments?
All right, roll call, please, Ms. Aliyevich. Mr. Bott.
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham.
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus.
Yes.
Mr. Lifton.
Yes.
Dr. Spigner.
Yes.
Mr. Suss.
Yes.
Motion carries. Wonderful. Thank you very much. Mr. Suss, finance?
Yes, I'd like to move items B-one through B-six as listed on the agenda.
Wonderful. Can I have a second, please? Dr. Spigner, any questions or comments on the finance items? Dr. Caputo.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson Marcus. I just wanted to draw everyone's attention to one of the items. I mean, there's, there's twenty-eight excellent professional development requests that we're asking you to approve, but at one, two, three, four, five, six, seventh down, on October twenty-first, there'll be a group of green team members from each of the schools attending the program at workshop. Each of the schools is being honored with Sustainable Jersey Schools. And spoiler alert, I'll have more information for you, but while it's still embargoed, there'll also be a significant district award given out to a district that we know. And so, we'll have more reports, and we'll bring that to, to the later meeting in October. Really excited by the, the efforts under Kate Limerick and all the green teams to schools that's led to that. So, more, more to come on that when we can talk about it.
Wonderful. It's always nice when we are at the School Boards Association to see our district being recognized. We are a small district, but we punch above our weight often, so always nice to see that. Thank you for pointing that out. Any other questions or comments on the finance section? Okay, roll call, please, Mrs. Aliyevich. Mr. Bott.
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham.
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg. Dr. Johnson Marcus.
Yes.
Mr. Lifton.
Yes.
Dr. Spigner.
Yes.
Mr. Suss.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Dr. Spigner, policy.
I'd like to move items C-one through C-two as listed on the agenda, please.
Wonderful. May I have a second, please? Ms. Cheatham, any questions or comments on the policy items? Seeing none. Roll call, please. Mr. Bott.
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham.
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus.
Yes.
Mr. Lifton.
Yes.
Dr. Spigner.
Yes.
Mr. Suss.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. On behalf of Mrs. Dierflinger, I'll move curriculum item D-one. May I have a second, please? Mr. Glassberg, any questions or comments on the curriculum items at this time? Yes, Dr. Caputo.
Just had a few thanks. I wanted to thank the responsiveness of the extracurricular committee members. We were going back and forth, even up until today, around some of the items I'll talk about. I also want to thank Mrs. Aliyevich and Ms. Plancher, Ms. Orcot, for helping put the, the, the band competitions on here in such a way that could be public and votable for the board, so you know our band is growing and ever improving and speaking about punching above their weight, you know, have outclassed some of the, the competitions locally, so they're expanding out of just the Middlesex County area. And so, we, we've started treating the band as their own entity in addition to a, a support group for football and football games. So, we'll begin by putting the band competitions on here, treating it like as a field trip for the board. So, we appreciate, again, the work of our folks in central office, and Mrs. Jay, and Mr. Messenger, and all the, our students who do wonderful work, as well as the extracurricular committee members for the last month engaging with us in this process on how to make it, how to best going forward. So, thank you for that.
Thank you to all who worked to make that a sustainable process, and indeed, any of us who live within earshot of the school can hear how hard they are working. So, I can attest to that. All right.
One more?
Yes, question, comment.
Just for the Harvard Model Congress, is that still online? Is that still a virtual activity? Cause I see zero cost for it.
No, zero cost to the board.
Okay. So, is it?
But students pay.
Students pay, okay.
All of our clubs.
Cause I know it was virtual, sorry, it was virtual due in COVID, so.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments on the curriculum items? All right, seeing none. Roll call, please, Mrs. Aliyevich. Mr. Bott.
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham.
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus.
Yes.
Mr. Lifton.
Yes.
Dr. Spigner.
Yes.
Mr. Suss.
Yes.
Motion carries. Wonderful, thank you. No change to the room, but indeed, we are open to the public. If there was anyone outside waiting for their moment, you can come in now. Just kidding, there's no one else here. So, I'll close that section of the meeting. Mrs. Cheatham, announcements.
Thank you very much. I'll start with Moss. Similar to the, the inner courtyard that Mr. Glassberg just talked about, they are well underway in their Moss bottle cap mural. Local recycled mixed media artist Julia Nguyen has been commissioned to do the mural, excuse me, so we're hoping to get it done. They're hoping to get it done in the spring, barring any construction delays. There are bottle cap collection bins at Moss and in the public library, in addition to a few other PTO board member porches. More information can be found on the Moss PTO Facebook page. And with that, moving on to Campbell. As already mentioned, they did have, sorry, I'm going back, going forward, going back. They had their book fair last week, which was very successful. They were able to use this classic dollars to buy the teachers' books as well for their classrooms, and several books for the school library, so always a nice event there. The next book swap, again as mentioned, is Tuesday, the twenty-first, and preparations are well underway for the Halloween parties on the thirty-first. Next, going over to Edgar. Their book fair starts November eleventh after the break, and then the first Edgar PTO meeting is Monday night for those that want to join. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mrs. Cheatham. I appreciate it. All right, at this time, I would like to move to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second? I feel like you should on your birthday. Mr. Lifton, all in favor? Good night, everyone.